Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the June meeting of Leeds Council Executive Board. I'll start by reminding everybody that this meeting is webcast and welcome anybody watching online. I am going to start with the formal items at the top of the agenda, please. So are there any appeals against refusal of inspection of documents, please?
Thanks, Chair. To confirm, no appeals have been received for today's agenda. Thanks.
Thank you. There are a number of exempt items, please.
Yes, Chair. Appendix two to item 11, which is the Customer Transformation Programme, and appendix eight to item 15 regarding an opportunity to host a major event in Leeds, both being designated as being exempt from publication under Access to Information Procedure Rule 10.43. And should the board be agreeable, these appendices will be considered in private at the conclusion of the public part of the meeting.
Thank you. Are there any late items to report, please?
No late items of business today, Chair, no.
That's great, thank you. And I shall turn to the board and see if anybody has a declaration of interest. councillor Lamb, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. On item six on the children's centres review, just to make members aware that I'm a member of the Elmwick Partnership of Schools and Services, and technically the, whether it be children's centres, are part of that partnership, but I'm satisfied that I can still take a full part in the discussion and decision-making.
Thank you, councillor Lamb. Are there any more declarations of interest? No, I don't see any. I shall turn to the minutes of the meeting we held on the 23rd of April, and is the board happy with those minutes? councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. On minute 1.30, on the outcome of a consultation to propose a proposal to close Queensway Primary School, the minutes say that assurance was provided that council officers would continue to liaise closely with representatives of the school and would do so with a sense of pace. I was somewhat surprised that there wasn't any update on the agenda today. I understand most of the staff, including the head teacher and the deputy head teacher, have secured new jobs for September. I understand there are only 54 children now enrolled for September, and what's been fed back to me is there's been a total lack of clarity, very limited communication. The next time we meet will be just before the start of the summer holidays, and I think it's, I think we are long overdue, and the families, teachers and community and children in that area deserve an update from the executive member about what is going to happen and what the future of that school looks like.
Thank you. I'll ask the director of children's services to come in first, please, Julie.
Thank you, Leader. Just to say that actually we have been in regular communication and conversation with the school, with the leaders in the school and also with the governors in the school. That has continued, and it has continued at pace, and I am confident and assured that that is the case. Clearly, you know, there's a lot of consultation to be had, there's a lot of live discussion, and we will be returning to exec board later on in the summer, really to talk about our general planning and approach to the situation that we've got in Leeds, which is a situation right across the country in terms of falling numbers, in terms of birth rates, and the implications and the impact on all schools, really, in the city. So we will be returning to that matter later on in the summer.
Thank you. councillor Lamb.
So I'm sorry to contradict that, Chair, and I'm keen to hear from the executive member, because unlike her, I have spoken to the head teacher of the school. They are quite upset that they haven't received an appropriate apology yet for the way that they've been treated. They've told me there is a total lack of clarity about what is happening, and I would like to hear what the advice is to parents who are hoping to remain at that school in September. Something coming back in the summer is not good enough.
Thank you. councillor Hayden, would you like to come in, please?
As Julie has said, we are in, I have not spoken personally to the head teacher, we are in constant communication and have spoken with the head teacher and the governors several, several times. The governing body run and manage Queensway School and the staffing. We are there to offer advice and as to how they, how they run the school. The statutory consultation was paused, and therefore Queensway will be open as a school in September. The governing body, they will, their duty is to see that there is appropriate education and staff, and I know that they are working with the trust, the foundation trust that they are part of, as well as the local authority, to ensure that the children that will be attending Queensway School in September have appropriate education going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Thank you, Leader. I'd be very happy, councillor Lamb, to meet you outside of exec board and just to share with you the occasions when the senior leadership have engaged with the head teacher and with governors. We have apologised, I have apologised here at exec board for any distress that has been caused to the teaching staff, to children and to the community, and I am absolutely confident and I know that other senior officers within the local authority have also expressed, you know, apologies and acknowledging the impact that there has been on the school on a number of occasions now.
Thank you. So are we, with those comments from councillor Lamb, are we happy with the minutes? I take it everybody is? Thank you. So we'll move on to the first paper on the agenda, which is item six, please, councillor Hayden.
Thank you, Leader. This paper sets out the work which has been undertaken through the review of our children's centre in Leeds and a plan to proceed to a statutory consultation on changes to ensure they remain effective, accessible and aligned with current and future needs of children and families. The review aims to respond to population changes and varying demand, recognising the importance of modernising and ensuring the financial sustainability of services so we can continue to give the best start to families across the city. A key focus is to offer alternative and modern innovative methods of service delivery, including digital and online services, and a greater integration with more services being delivered together from a smaller number of buildings. The proposed changes would see, would be see integration with the new family hubs. Family hubs are a network of organisations that will work closely together to make it easier for families of all ages to access the support they need. So there is an opportunity to consider how the needs of families with children under the age of five can be met in future children's centres offer that links with the family hub model. The report also proposes closer working with existing community-based services such as libraries and community hubs, resulting in an enhanced range of services being offered to support children and their families in their local areas and reducing the risk of services being duplicated. In addition, a new funding formula is designed to ensure resources are distributed across the city to best meet the needs, identified needs within communities, and as part of the city's ongoing commitment to tackle inequality through targeted support for the most vulnerable and at-risk residents. During March and April, surveys and engagement events were carried out, which resulted in more than 2,700 responses from families, carers and also over 250 from professionals across education, health, early years and the third sector offering their views and thoughts. This has reinforced the importance of universal and early help services, local access, strong partnership working and the role of children's centres in supporting both families and the wider workforce. It also emphasised the value of integrated and community-based services in preventing escalation of need. So I would like to encourage the engagement of residents and elected members in the statutory consultation process, which is expected to begin at the end of the month, with further report to then be presented to the executive board in the autumn. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Hayden. Any comments, councillor Lamb, please?
Yep, thank you, Chair. Yeah, a few, a few things. I put, this is about consultation at this stage, so given, see what we discussed a few minutes ago, can we just get an assurance that this is a genuinely open consultation, that we are going to listen carefully to what people say in response and take into account what they say? The second question I have is around making sure that the geographical spread of children's centres factors in everything. So I perfectly understand and recognise that services are going to be concentrated where there is the most need, but given how big a city this is and as someone who represents an outer area, it's really important that the services are accessible wherever you are in the city if you need them. And yes, the, the level of need might not be the same in an area I represent as it is in some other parts of the city. It doesn't mean there isn't significant need, and we need to make sure any decisions are weighted towards travelling, not just for, for users but also for staff, and to make sure that if they're being expected to deliver things remotely, it's realistic and we've properly costed in how much it will cost them in time and money to move around the city a lot, rather than being from, from fixed bases. And the final point is, if I've understood this correctly, it was expected that the savings that you've referred to will be a full year saving, but we're already in June and we're not getting a report back until the autumn, I think you said. So by the time anything's implemented, the savings are going to be a fraction of what was set out in the budget just a few months ago. So where are you intending to make up those savings? Because you'll have to cut something somewhere else to make up for the savings you're not making in year.
Thank you. councillor Hayden, please.
Thank you. Yes, it will be a full consultation and it will, and people will be listened to. I want to hear not just from people who use the services at the moment, actually more importantly, I want to hear from people who are not using the services at the moment and why, and why not, and what we can do to, to change things so that they are more likely to use the services. It will, so yeah, I want as many people as possible to, to contribute to the services, especially prospective parents, parents, carers of, of, of children, you know, right now, and those who are thinking of having children. To be honest, somebody like me, I mean, I know I'm an elected member, so I will very much take in part in the consultation, but my children are now 15 and 13, so I want to hear from people who are in the, caring for or parents of those, as well as, as well as across the, the community in terms of other partners that will want to, but who have already very kindly, very kindly contributed already. In terms of the geographical spread, yes, we are a big city and, and we're very, you know, and it was a decision to keep, even in the outer areas where, you know, things look okay, our children's centres. And yes, there will be targeted support for the most vulnerable and at-risk residents, but I am acutely aware, because of where I represent as well, that there are areas which are, which very much need to keep the services that they've, that they've got, that needs those services enhanced, that do not fit into a bracket of our most needy or at-risk residents, but the need is very, very high in pockets or even in quite large areas of certain, of certain areas of the city. So all that will be taken into account and it will, the consultation and the conversations will be at a very local level about what the need is at that, at that, in that locality and how best it can. There will be some areas which have a number of different buildings which, so that can be utilised better and bring services to better and are more integrated. There will be some areas that don't have anywhere near like a number of buildings that need to, that will, will need their, their children's centres and may be enhanced, so that, so we will look at it very much at a local level throughout the city. Don't know whether you want to come in, Julie?
Julie, please.
Thank you, thank you, Leader. Thank you, councillor Hayden. Yeah, I mean, I think we're starting from a really, really strong position in Leeds. You know, we've developed our family hubs, our early help and our family support offer is strong. We've got a lot of resource within the city in comparison to other local authorities, and this is a real opportunity for us to be thinking about the national reforms, the reforms that we are mandated to deliver as a partnership, as a multi-agency partnership in the city. In terms of buildings, I suppose, I think we need to think differently as well about actually our mode of delivery. The consultation is absolutely key, you know, and this is where, when we had previous consultation with children and families when we were doing our work with Nesta, actually some families, some parents and carers told us that actually they preferred to be outdoors with their children, and actually, you know, a building it tends could feel like a barrier for them. Again, parents, carers have told us that actually they want us to be flexible and agile in terms of how we deliver services. So thinking about digitalisation, thinking about online services, thinking about, you know, how that can be more flexible in terms of hours, you know, so fathers as an example, you know, mothers who are working longer hours, who might want to be able to access services through a digital offer in the evening or at the weekends. So the consultation is absolutely key in terms of us listening, you know, to what the needs of families are in 2025 and us reflecting that, you know, in our plans for the future. The reality is, we have to deliver family support in a context of increased child poverty, in a context of widening inequality, you know, increased absence for children in school, you know, children not being school-ready. And so we have to have a targeted offer, a differentiated offer, but absolutely, we need to look at the continuum in terms of universal services, a core offer for all, and then a more targeted offer for those children who are the most vulnerable. We know, there's been a recent report for, from the Centre for Young Lives, all around children's centres, all around family hubs, and we know that children who are living in persistent disadvantage, so children who are in receipt of free school meals for more than 80% of their time in school, are likely to leave school 22.9, nearly 23 months behind their peers. You know, we hear from primary heads in the city that children are presenting, you know, at age five in school, you know, not able to talk, you know, having real issues with speech and language, not being toilet-trained, you know, so we absolutely want to have an offer that goes right across the city, but we also, in the Children and Young People's Plan, you know, part of our ambition and it's set in that plan, is that we need to narrow the gap quicker and faster for those children who are disadvantaged. But of course, we want to meet the needs of children right across the city, but we have to be clear that with a finite resource, we do have to have, you know, more of that continuum. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. councillor Lamb, please.
So thank you for those responses. One part of it wasn't, wasn't answered. So around the finances, it was shown in the budget papers, I believe, that this should be a full year saving, which clearly isn't going to happen. So where's that going to be made up from? And can you just clarify what the approach is to the savings? So will there be less frontline workers? Is it buildings? Is it less management? Is it just less services provided? Because this, this is about saving money, isn't it?
Julie, please.
Thank you, Leader. Apologies, I've made my notes to come back on that point, councillor Lamb. We have to be really clear that given where we are, where, you know, local authorities right across the country are in terms of their finances, that yes, there has to be an element here in terms of efficiencies, and that's right and proper in terms of the public purse, and I think it's what, you know, the people of Leeds would expect. But equally, we've been really clear that we retain our ambition for children in this city despite the challenges. And as I've said, you know, this is a genuine opportunity for us to think about how we are responding to the national reforms. We can't have a position where we're developing integrated family help in the city with our police, with our health colleagues, with our education leaders, where we're looking at being more flexible, and actually our children's centres are sitting here in asylum. We have to have an integrated approach. We've talked about buildings, you know, there's a whole range of assets that we've got right across the partnership that we need to make best effect of. In terms of the, the budget and the savings, you know, we do have, as we've talked here before, real clear governance arrangements around that. We have my management meeting once a week, we have the delivery board, which is cross-corporate, which meets once a month, and we also have the member oversight meeting. Where we do have instances where it would appear that we're not going to make the initial savings proposals, remedial action is being taken in a really, really timely way. Again, us coming together as senior leaders right across the council to identify, you know, what we need to do instead. So that work absolutely is underway, as you would expect, councillor Lamb.
Thank you. Are there any more comments on this paper? I don't see anybody, so I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 30, and is everybody? councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, I'm not confident about this one at all, so I'll be reserving my position on this.
Okay, so we've noted councillor Lamb's position and I take it everybody else is happy with the recommendations. Thank you. We'll move on to finance again, councillor Cooper. Items seven and eight, please.
Thank you, Leader. And if it's okay with you, I'll take both items at the same time to save coming back for the second Treasury report. So first of all, item seven, the financial health monitoring outturn. So this is the, the results from 2425 year for the revenue budget. We did achieve a balanced budget, a position for the end of year, which we all know we're legally required to set a balanced position by the end of the year. And we, in the report, you can see the detail of the various areas that worst, were overspent within the year. We achieved the balanced budget through either mitigating actions that were taken throughout the year and, and towards the end of the year, or indeed with our reserve position that we were able to make sure that we've balanced with. The report does go into detail of each directorate and their spending throughout the year and whether they're overspent or underspent, and indeed it goes into the budget action plan savings as well, and whether they were achieved or not achieved. And I'm pleased to say that the majority of budget action plans were achieved by the directures, and indeed they identified a number of other areas of savings during the year that they also managed to achieve the majority of. There still are a number of the, of savings that were outstanding that we hope to achieve within this financial year, and a very small amount that we now recognise that, that won't be achieved. The whole detail is, is in the report. So I think the only other thing to say is about the dedicated schools grant and the, we are forecasting the, the outturn of that will be in deficit this year by some 13.2 million. And, and of course, there's a lot of detail within the report, I'm sure members have read, but I shall leave it there for questions on the financial health monitoring. To move to the Treasury Management Report, we have outturned at 2.5, just over 2.5 billion for the year in debt, and that is down somewhat from the forecasted amount which was in February, that we've managed to achieve that lower amount. We are within all the boundaries and parameters that you would expect, given that we do have over a six billion worth of assets within the council as well. So I will leave that one there for questions as well, Leader, if that's okay with you.
Thank you. councillor Lamb, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. So again, taking the same approach, two papers in one. First thing I want to say is thank you to the finance team in the council, and we are extremely lucky, and I, as an opposition member, am reassured that we have a really strong and effective team of finance officers in the council. And while we don't always like the numbers that they have to present us, and we don't always like the, the decisions that have to flow from that, I am confident and assured that they regularly present us with accurate information to base those decisions on. And it can't be said everywhere, but we are fortunate to have them. And that really reflects, I don't have a lot to add on the Treasury Management side of things, because I think they've done an excellent job of, of managing what, what we have. I'm glad you raised the, the dedicated schools grant, that's something I wanted to pick up on. Obviously, it's, it's complicated and technical, so all the millions watching at home will wonder what on earth we're talking about, but effectively the money that goes to schools were overspent by 13.2 million pounds. Normally councils are not allowed to do that, but there's a statutory override in place which allows us to hold that deficit budget. That lasts until 2026. The current forecast suggests that that situation will get worse this year, not better, and we don't know yet what governments are going to do about that statutory override. My understanding is that most councils' children's services departments have come up with a management action plan that sets out what they intend to do in that circumstance. What I'm not clear is why children's services in Leeds have not yet produced a management action plan, so I'd like to know, please.
Thank you, councillor Lamb. It's looking, Julie, please.
Thank you, thank you, Leader. I think the first thing to say is that in comparison to other local authorities, the DSG, the deficit in Leeds is significantly lower. I meet with directors of children's services across the country, and actually their deficits are significantly, significantly higher than we have in Leeds, and that's because of the way in which we have monitored this and worked as a partnership, actually, and I thank our schools and our school leaders across the city, because this has been a partnership approach to that. We do have a, a action plan to manage the, the deficit, you know, that is a requirement, and that is something, again, that where we take a cross-corporate approach to that, that's not, not something that children's services do in isolation, it's something that I have been working hand in glove with colleagues in finance and others. We take this really, really seriously, you know, as I've said, and I think that's reflected in the fact that we do not have the huge deficits that other local authorities do have. In addition to that, I think it's really, really important to say that, you know, this is local authorities who are operating in a broken system, a broken system that has been acknowledged for some time now. And at the end of the day, we have a statutory responsibility to meet the needs of children who do have additional needs, and where, you know, where, where it's right and where the criteria for the DSG is met, then it's right that we need to fulfil our statutory responsibility to those children. But I do want to assure you, councillor Lamb, that the oversight of that, in terms of cross-corporate oversight, is really, really robust.
Thank you. councillor Lamb, please.
Thank you. So if the situation is not as bad in Leeds, it should be easier to produce the action plan that others have. And what's clear is the, the management action plan has not been presented to this executive board yet, so when will it be, is the question? And then my final two questions on this are, again, to the director of children's services and the director of adults, particularly given item six, and we've already hit on that significant item, savings are not going to be delivered on time. Can you give me an assurance, because this report is looking backwards, that when we meet again in a month's time, the first month will not be projecting any overspend? So are you confident that you are going to deliver a balanced budget and that will be the position next month? And I'll be asking the same question of the director of adults.
Julie, please.
Thank you, Leader. I'll come in, and I think Victoria wants to come in after me. As I've said, there's a lot of work that has been ongoing, as you would expect, in relation to the deficit action plan. It's really complex, I think councillor Lamb, that was your opening statement at the board, you know, how complex this is. But we will be in a position, you know, Anne, Victoria and I will be in a position to bring the budget action plan back, back here, the deficit action plan, later on in the year, and we can certainly have a conversation about that and come back to you on that, councillor Lamb. In respect of the ongoing... In respect of the ongoing financial position within the directorate, I think we've talked here previously about the work of the delivery board, you know, the range of work streams that we have underway, the fact that we've been able to, you know, almost double our children's homes, the fact that we are just about to purchase another building, which will be provisioned for parents who are at risk of losing their children, additional homes for complex needs, or the work that we've done around increasing the number of foster carers, increasing, you know, supported accommodation for children that are sixteen and seventeen. The reality is, again, we are operating, this is forty years, I think, I've been working with children and families, and I have never worked in a more challenging context. And part of that is, again, is around poverty. It's around the fact that actually, you know, I've worked across Yorkshire and Humber Side, I think, in all but one local authorities. I've worked across England, Ireland, Scotland and Wales. And the challenges that we have here in Leeds are very, very different to that which I have experienced in other local authorities. And in the main, you know, the issue of poverty, the issue of inequality. Our rate per ten thousand of children looked after doubles when you look at the areas of highest deprivation in the city. And that reflects the relationship between children living in poverty, abuse and neglecting the need for children to become looked after. And that is the reality and we can't get away from that. So when we do have children who are in need of help and protection, we have a statutory responsibility to do that. As councillor Cooper has said, you know, we made a number of significant savings last year and we have really clear plans this year to do the same. But it is a challenge and statutorily, we have to meet the needs of children and children with the most complex of needs. So councillor Lamb, you know, all I can say, it will continue to be a challenge. We're operating within a national system of placements for children, which is broken. We're operating within a national system for children with special education and needs and disabilities, which is broken. And we're also working in a city. You know, the scale and the volume of the challenges really is second to none.
Thank you. I'm going to bring Victoria in and then Caroline, please. So Victoria, please.
Yeah, we just emphasised that we are doing a very deep look into the financial position in this first two months of the financial year. We normally do that in September to get a real view of where we're going to outturn. The finance team have spent a lot of time with the directorates to get that feel now, which is quite difficult because we are early. But we have seen that some of the pressures that are coming through from last year are materialising in the new financial year, although we did put a significant amount of investment into in both adults and childrens. Now, some of that is because of the trends that we've seen in previous years are different to what we saw last winter, both in adults and childrens. And the complexity of those people that require the support and care of the local authority are more complex and therefore it is a lot more challenging, as Julie said. I don't have the position at the moment. It will be reported to next executive board on the financial position. But we're all working hard and together around managing that position and what we can do. But we've got an early indication now of where we think we will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline, please.
Thank you very much. So thank you councillor Lamb. We know that we started this financial year with an overspend position because of our demand budget continuing to be under pressure in the way that Victoria has just referred to. But also increasingly worryingly, a reduction in our income. Particularly, this is in terms of client contributions, people who pay a contribution to their care. So we are aware that we've started the year with those two significant and sizable funding pressures. However, we are working really hard at the delivery of the savings that we've already identified to deliver in year. And then also looking at further opportunities where we might be able to deliver more savings. One of the areas that we're doing quite a lot of detailed work is around how we can ensure that we're preventing people needing care and support in the first place and those people requiring care and support, how we can promote their independence more and reduce the cost of their packages of care. But in the way that Julie's described, that we know and we recognise this is a national picture. I'm part of the Association of Directors of Social Services trustees, board of trustees. We were, we've just undertaken a spring survey of all local authorities with adult social care responsibilities across the country. And early indications are already showing that eighty percent of local authorities with adult social care responsibilities are reporting or anticipating overspend position in this financial year due to both of those reasons. Mainly, a significant reduction in client income, where people who fund their own care or people who contribute to their care are seeing their own funds depleted quite early on and therefore are requiring the council to pick up the cost of their care. And then also the point that Victoria has just raised about the numbers of people requiring more, larger packages of care because of increased complexity of need. So we're not sitting here saying it's all too difficult and we're not going to be able to recover this position. I would just like to assure you that we're doing a whole lot of work to look at how we can make sure that we do come back to a position which is more around a balanced budget.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper, please.
Yes, thank you, leader. And just to add to what Julie, Victoria and Caroline have just said in response to the questions from councillor Lamb, it's really clear that pressures in social care are continuing. And in this financial year, we don't know to what amount that is as of yet. We have got action plans in place to deal with those pressures that is going to work across corporately, both in children's, adults, finance and across all directorates as well. And I'm also very happy to brief councillor Lamb from my perspective and with officers on all of that work in much more detail, should you wish to have that, particularly early doors when we're starting the financial year. Thank you, leader.
Thank you. There's no more comments on this. So we've taken the two papers together on the discussion, but I will take the recommendations separately. So item seven, which is the financial health monitoring, the recommendations are on page one hundred and eight, and I take it everybody is happy with those. Thank you. And item eight, which is the Treasury Management outturn twenty four, twenty five, the recommendation is on page one hundred and eighty seven. I'll see if everybody is happy with that recommendation. That's great. Thank you. Thank you councillor Cooper for those two items. And we'll move on to your papers, please councillor Prior, item nine.
Thank you, leader. So my first paper is Leeds Local Plan, A Planning Framework for Development, twenty twenty two to twenty forty two. So this paper updates our local plan, which is a statutory document setting out how much new development is forecast to take place right across the city, where it will be and how it will look. The report sets out the rationale for updating the local plan, including increasing the delivery of affordable housing as a response to the increase in the costs of private rented housing, responding to Leeds' continuing population growth, in particular growth among younger and older people, and also planning for the new tram and the expansion of city centre living and those trends. And it also sets out the benefits of the previous local plan, including the delivery of forty thousand new homes, the Leeds flood alleviation scheme and the East Leeds orbital route. This report is to approve the material appended to this report in appendices one to nine for the purposes of public consultation, which is to commence no earlier than the thirtieth of June this year, for ten weeks, that is. It's also to agree that further non-material changes may be made to the consultation, that no further, sorry, and to agree that further non-material changes may be made to the consultation material prior to the commencement of the consultation. I shall leave it there for opening remarks. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Prior. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. I think the first thing I'd do is acknowledge the huge amount of work that development plans panel have done, along with officers to get to this point. As a member of that committee, there is an awful lot of, yeah, an awful lot of time being spent on it. And again, the officer team have been really, really helpful and open. The second thing I want to do on this is to reassure the public who get very fatigued and cynical about consultations, where we go and ask them about things that have already been decided, that this is not one of those consultations. It is huge. We've got over nineteen hundred pages of this executive board agenda, of which nine hundred and some are dedicated to this single item. I'd often criticise, because you not have got that down to a page, but there's a huge amount of information that people need and need access to. It is one of the most important things and impactful things that we do in our city and in our communities in deciding where housing growth should be, where employment land should go, what should be green belt, what shouldn't be green belt, how our infrastructure should develop. And so I would really encourage people to get involved in this because I'm very clear that nothing that's been set out at this point is set in stone by any way, shape or form. It is quite an open and transparent process. The thing that we really need to do is make sure it's accessible to people. And it's something that we've talked a lot about in DPP. We don't have full access to the consultation material yet, but the sort of things we've talked about, that I hope perhaps you can give us some reassurance on today, is that the information is as simple as possible in the place that it's first presented, but that it's easy then to find where to go if you want more detail. Because if you're presented with nine hundred pages, best will in the world, most people are going to switch off and and so that's not for me. Where actually this really is important. The second aspect is making it relevant to local communities. As we've talked about, calling it the Leeds Local Plan is accurate because it's the Leeds City Council Administrative Area. But if you live in Wetherby, Kipex, Geisley, Horstford, Morley, you don't necessarily associate yourself with the Leeds Local Plan. So it needs to be really clear. And there are opportunities with the AI and things that we've talked about to quite easily produce geographically specific slides and presentations. And then the final bit is how we make sure we engage really well with people. So lots of opportunities for people to come and understand what it's all about. It is really important that people get involved and have their say, and it will make a difference on the final outcome. But it's just make sure we have enough sessions, they're in the right places, at the right times, the right people are there. And there is every opportunity that we're not, digital will be really important and probably how most people will be expected to engage with this. But that doesn't suit everybody. And we have to make sure that those people that want to be able to see the information on paper, have someone talk it through with them, make it relevant to all ages, all sectors of the community. So they're really the three things I'm looking for some assurance about, please.
Thank you councillor Lamb. Councillor Prior, please.
Yeah, just first of all, I want to thank councillor Lamb for his comments. He's absolutely right about the nature of this consultation. We do need to build more houses, but it's essential we build them in the correct place and in the right way. And actually, the response of this consultation will genuinely really shape that. I appreciate your comments about the accessibility of the consultation. I think that's essential. We want to make sure we're hearing from everybody. So that's about different formats the consultation takes. You're absolutely right. It is about making sure it's clear this is the entire Leeds area, which does include, of course, Wetherby, Morley, Kipex, Garth, and kind of all those suburbs as well. Can I ask, an officer just comes in on some of the detail around the accessibility of the consultation.
Thank you. Martin, please.
Thank you, leader. Yes, can I just say that we're certainly doing our utmost to ensure that we not only reach as many people as we can in this consultation, but that we make it as engaging as we can? Because not everyone is thoroughly across and interested in the technicalities of planning. But there are lots of issues in here that people will be interested in. So it's presenting it to them at first in a very simple way. And then as they read through, they can choose to go into more depth on those issues. So that's the approach we've taken. And appendix two sets out the consultation material, which we intend to start very much plain English in summary and then into more depth as we go on. Just on the bringing out the local relevance councillor Lamb, we've split the city into ten sub areas. So there's very much going to be an individual sub area and settlement focus to a lot of the way that this material is presented. We will be in each of those ten sub areas. And we will also aim to go to high footfall areas within those sub areas to talk to people and hand out material to advertise the consultation. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Shall we move to the recommendations on this report, which are on page one hundred and ninety nine? And I take it that everybody's happy with these recommendations? That's great. Thank you. And I'll add my thanks to both the officers who've been working on this and as councillor Lamb and Prior said, our colleagues that sit on development plans panel, because I know it is a huge amount of work for them and they do it very thoroughly. Okay, I'm going to move on to item ten, please councillor Prior.
Thank you. So this is the West Yorkshire Mass Transit Joint Development Plan Document. So this plan provides recommendations for establishing governance arrangements to support the preparation of a joint development plan document between the five West Yorkshire local planning authorities for our new tram in West Yorkshire. So a clear statutory planning framework with DPD status is essential to support the application for planning permission to be made to the Planning Inspectorate as part of the Combined Authorities Transport and Works Act order application and the development of future mass transit activity. This report recommends to full council that it agrees to prepare this joint development plan document with one or more local planning authorities on the basis set out in the report, agrees to enter into that joint development plan document and agreed to establish joint arrangements with the other West Yorkshire councils to exercise executive functions associated with the plan making by way of a joint committee. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Prior. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. So without agreeing this, there is no mass transit in West Yorkshire. Because we've got, this is the mechanics, the nuts and bolts of how it comes about. So absolutely, I will support this. I think from the outset, we have all been in agreement that we want to see mass transit for too long. Leeds has been known as the biggest city in Europe without a mass transit system, and it's long past time that we fix that. None of our respective political parties nationally have been terribly helpful to this point. But the funding's agreed to a degree. And hopefully, all systems go this time. Where I have two criticisms of the combined authority are about regularly and properly communicating the benefits to the whole region of this because there are two lines. There are a lot of parts of West Yorkshire and indeed Leeds who will not see a mass transit line near their settlement for a long time. That doesn't mean they won't feel the benefits of it. But it's a lot harder to explain that when you're not physically going to be able to get on a tram from your house for decades to come, even when this is fully built out and implemented. And the second bit is just being very open. So one is being open about the benefits and two is being open about the costs. So it was very welcome that we had the two point one billion reaffirmed by the Chancellor a week ago. The cost of the scheme is a minimum of two and a half billion. So there is still four hundred million pounds, which is going to have to be contributed locally. And I think it needs some honesty about where that money is going to come from. That's not for here today, but it is something that Waikia need to go to. I'd like to suggest a recommendation G to go with this. When we discussed this at the Waikia Board, I raised the issue of making sure this joint development plans panel is, has political balance built into it. And while it wasn't confirmed that they would, the inference was given it would be looked into. But I'd like to make it the position of this council that that should happen. This is a long term project. Politics changes. There are all out elections in parts of West Yorkshire next year. The councils may look very different. To this point, there has been cross party support for mass tram. To this point, there has been cross-party support for mass transit to deliver it. That's crucial. And so I'd just like to encourage that the position of this council is that there should be political balance built into that board, whatever the make-ups of councils are, to make sure that we can continue cross-party support to deliver this key infrastructure.
Thank you. Nicole, please.
Thanks, Leader. Just on the joint arrangements, it is a recommendation to delegate only the executive function part of making the plan and therefore it would be if all the five authorities agree to that, their representation would come from their executive boards. So collectively, that joint committee would reflect the political leadership across the five authorities. But in relation to Leeds, it would need to be your nomination leader from your executive board.
Thank you. That's helpful. And obviously, I become leader because the cross-party council votes me or some members don't vote for me, Councillor Lam, but here I am. So I do think that is a helpful update. I think it's worth reflecting, of course, like Nicole says, it's the executive function. Clearly, there's other planning functions come through here. The Combined Authority that's leading it, we are, have a cross-party Combined Authority in West Yorkshire and that's guaranteed. Not every Combined Authority has that and as Councillor Prior knows from the Transport Committee as well, that works on a cross-party basis as well. So I think clearly there is a specific purpose of this Joint Development Plan Committee, but the work of a Combined Authority does work both in terms of the five councils that make up the Combined Authority alongside the mayor and also the political balance of West Yorkshire is reflected in the makeup of the Combined Authority. So I do think that really important point you make, the lifetime of these schemes can stretch for many years and things can change in that time. And like I say, we started off with the Combined Authority in West Yorkshire 10 or 12 years ago with that cross-party working in mind, which is the way we have established the Combined Authority working. Are there any more comments on this paper? Councillor Lam?
So can we just clarify, is Nicole saying, because this wasn't the advice that was given at Wyca, is Nicole saying that you can't have political balance members on this in the same way as the Combined Authority Board has political balance members?
Nicole, please.
So each constituent authority will nominate someone to sit on the joint committee to make executive decisions in relation to this matter instead of each one going back to its own executive board. So the reason why it's being recommended is to truncate the timeline really for the early parts of the joint development plan being proceeded against. The actual adoption of the plan has to go back to each constituent authority to agree to adopt it, but because it's a nomination from each authority, it will be a member of that each authority's executive committee. So depending on what the political makeup is across the five authorities, then that's what the representation will be. But it's not a committee of the Combined Authority, it's a joint arrangement of the five constituent authorities.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
Forgive me if it's me that's being dumb, but I still don't understand that the West Yorkshire Combined Authority Board is made up in the same way. It's the leader of each authority and then there are three political balance members. Is there any reason why this board cannot also have three political balance members?
That's not what's being recommended. It's not a committee that needs political balance.
But could it have it if it wanted to?
I'm not so sure it can, Councillor Lam, but it is something I'd need to have a look into, but I don't think it is, no.
Okay. Are we all ready to move to the recommendations then? Councillor Lam, please.
Can I ask, I mean, I'm happy to support the recommendations as they are, but can we pick that up outside the meeting to see if it's something that can be done? And I would hope if it can, it's something you would consider supporting.
Let's, A, pick up the point you've made, Councillor Lam, outside the meeting. I think that's important. I think the commitment we can give in terms of the recommendation here is also, in terms of the, when we get to appointing a representative onto this committee, about making sure that representative is feeding back here as well. I think that's an important point as well. So we'll stick to the recommendations that are in the paper and we'll pick up those two points as well from the discussion at this meeting. So with that, I take it you're happy with the recommendations, Councillor Lam, and everybody else is happy with the recommendations? That's great, thank you. That's agreed and we'll thank you, Councillor Prior, and we'll move on to Item 11, please, Councillor Harland.
Thank you, Leader. So this is a paper that follows a report that came to the December Executive Board outlining the new customer strategy with a detailed business case due to follow. This is that business case. The Exec Board are asked to approve the delivery of a three-and-a-half-year programme at a cost of 12 million on an invest-to-save basis. The report includes the estimated costs and anticipated benefits of the Customer Transformation Programme, focusing on three areas: customer experience, colleague experience, and efficiency and financial benefits to the council. The programme aims to enable customers to access and engage with council services in a simplified and standardised way across different channels through a unified front-door function for all council contact. It is important to note, though, that this represents a push towards digital first. It is not digital only. We absolutely recognise that for some people, they either do not want to or are unable to use digital platforms for contact. Face-to-face and telephone contact will always remain as an option. The report gives all the detail around the programme, the rationale behind it and the results of the related survey. I think it's a very positive report. It's the start of an exciting journey, I think. And I'd like to say thanks to Lee and everybody who's got us to this point. I'll leave it there, Leader, and happy to take questions.
Thank you, Councillor Harland. Councillor Lam, please.
Thank you, Chair. A few months ago, I had a personal council tax query and I always have a view, it's not, if it's a personal matter, you shouldn't abuse your council position. So I tried to navigate the council website to find what I wanted and failed spectacularly in that. So, and then finding the right number to ring was challenging, but when I eventually found it, I found myself at number 274 in the queue when I rang up. And I thought, oh, hang on, see how quickly I go down the queue? And I think about 45 minutes later, I'd made it into the high 260s and at that point I gave up and I've had several subsequent attempts and then just gave up, frankly, because, and I know I'm not alone in that experience from speaking to residents. So I welcome the intent behind this and the recognition that, I've said before, I hate calling our residents customers. I kind of get it, but it bothers me. I think we should find a better way of describing the people we're here to serve because that's who they are. And at the moment, we don't do it very well, it's fair to say, in terms of their interactions. So I suppose it's typical council that the headline of this is that we're planning to spend, well, we're planning to save 11 million pounds in year three and we're going to spend 12 million pounds to save it, in essence. I have to, I'm a little, I applaud the direction of travel. There's lots of things in here that I support. I'm a little concerned about what we're predating it on and the metrics and data behind it, which are not terribly specific. So I'm sure everyone is ready to flick to page 1,785 in the agenda to look at the table about how will success be measured? And what this doesn't do is set out the baseline of where our starting point is. So it's not telling us, so it's, what's the measure? Proportion of contacts received across different channels, website drop rates, proportion of telephone calls answered. So I'd like to see what those numbers are today and what we expect the improvement to be. So if in three years' time, I've still got the same council tax query, which I may well have if we don't make some improvements, where will I be in the queue when I ring up? And how long will it take me to get an answer? On my recent experience, I think if I rang up today, maybe two weeks on Tuesday, I would get to the top 10 in the queue and possibly get an answer to my query. And then my final question for now, in the papers it says we have 276,000 contacts each month. Yep. So what it doesn't tell me is the breakdown of that. So how many of those contacts are because the council didn't do its job properly in the first place? So they didn't empty the bins on time, they didn't respond to the council house repairs, so someone's having to chase it up. There's a pothole that should have been fixed and someone's chasing that up. How many of those, if we just did it right first time, how many fewer calls would we have anyway? Do we know that? So I'm concerned that we don't really know where we're starting from and while there's some broad inquiries of the improvements we expect, what will someone actually expect to see as a difference and when can they expect to see it?
Thank you, Councillor Lam. Sorry, Councillor Harland, John's coming.
Just what I will say with the council tax inquiries is that everybody's council tax bill more or less lands on the doorstep at the same time. So it is one of our peak inquiries. As for the details that you've asked for, I'll hand over to Lee, if that's okay, and James.
Thank you, Councillor Harland. Just on the council tax, I think the other thing, certainly since April-May, there's been unprecedented demand for council tax inquiries for a whole set of reasons. So it has been really difficult to get through, I would say that, and that's an issue. I mean, I think you articulated then an issue which is why we're aiming to do what we do. And I think we've, you know, we've got a long history of doing work in customer services and pushing how we do. I think the problem with customer service is the expectation is constantly changing as well and people, because of technology and things like that, their expectation is more, so our ability, you know, to keep up. So this is the sort of next iteration of that. In terms of the data, what we've said in here is that whilst we're asking for that investment now, we won't draw down on that investment until we've done the detailed service-by-service business cases for that. And so part of developing that business case is to do the detailed data work. So the data that was used to pull together the strategy and we've used at a higher level in this is high level. I won't deny that it isn't high level in that sense, but it has been provided by council services across the channels that we're able to collect that telephone, email, et cetera. I think the work we'll do in the business cases is to delve down into that detail even more and understand what we can do. So we do know, so the 276 contacts, I think are principally telephone contacts, that can be broken down into the type, the nature, the services and the nature of the inquiry. We have got that data. What we struggle to do, and this is another part of doing this, is join data from different systems together around customers so that we can pull that sort of complete picture together of how customers interact with it. So we have a lot of service data. We have a lot of customer data, but it's all in different places and we don't join that together. So to try and improve the customer experience, that's a key part of this programme, is to try and pull all, is to work to integrate that data, to develop a single view. And the technology that we want to invest in this that we've, is, will help us do that. So it's a real challenge. I'm not going to deny that it is a real challenge and it's always been a real challenge in terms of getting those issues right. I think where we're at now, because of the nature of the technology changes, whereas we've had an ambition, I think for a number of years around single view and things like that, I think we're actually in a much better position now to do that because the technology enables that to happen, whereas probably we haven't been able to do that in the past. And also the nature of that digital content changes in terms of the ask of the council, Julie mentioned earlier about early help and parents wanting more online stuff and how they can do that. That's probably a new area that, you know, is fundamental to us looking at in terms of this. So the challenges will be there, but we'll do it on a, as I say, on a service-by-service basis. That will look at the data and the baseline and we can baseline at a high level. So I'm happy to talk to you about and help you articulate some of that data for you when we've got it. But we won't progress with this until we've done that detailed work and we know where the contact is, what it's for, how we can move that contact into the unified front-door in a better way and release efficiencies off the back. Because we do know most people who contact us are online before they ring up or come in at face-to-face. We know that, you know, they want to use digital services. We know that people will adopt digital services quickly if they're there to use. What we struggle with is that integration at the moment and this is a programme that will help us push that and develop it further. But like I say, I'm happy, I am more than happy to come and show you a lot of that stuff.
Great, thank you. Councillor Harland, then Councillor Lam, please.
Just to say that we use the term customer because it's not just our residents that we class as customers, it's third sector, anybody that contacts the council, that's why we use it.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, for Gerard's benefit, I'm going to reserve my position on this one, not because I don't support the direction of travel, I absolutely do. I don't feel personally there's enough information here around value for money to say 12 million pounds is going to deliver the improvements. I'm not clear where we're going from and where we're going to. And my final question is, the 276,000 people a month, does that reflect people like me who gave up and hung the phone up? Or is that people who got through?
Thank you. Lee, please.
I'll need to check that. I think it's people who got through, so not abandoned. But I'll check.
Thank you. James, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just want to come back quickly on the savings in light of what Councillor Lam's just commented upon. So just so everybody's clear, in the years of the development programme, it will cost 11.9 million in terms of investment, however, 2 million of that is contingency, which we may not need and hopefully not, but 11.9 if we do. Over that three years of implementation, we will deliver 11.1 million of savings, so the net cost is about 800,000. But after that, it will deliver 6.2 million of savings every year thereafter with a cost of 1.7 million. So a net saving from 29.30 of 4.5 million per year, which will sum that up in terms of a significant sum of saving.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper, please.
Thanks, Leader. And like Councillor Harland, I'm also really pleased to see this report and this strategy come forward. I think ultimately it will give us the savings that we need as a council, but we can't continue to stay where we are. We can't stand still. We have to move forward. And in terms of the technology, you know, everybody else now, their lives are on their digital devices. A lot of people would rather use digital access for their inquiries or payments or whatever it is that they want to, a transaction they want to make with us or, you know. And so what we're saying is that we need to get up to speed with where everybody else is in terms of their digital usage and we're not at the moment. And this is about how we can achieve that, so that actually we're looking at a digital offer first. It's not the only offer. We still will have other forms of contact, not least of which will still be the hubs and the face-to-face contact and so on like that. That is absolutely crucial for the way in which people access council services and make inquiries as well throughout our communities as well. So I'm really pleased to see this come forward. I look forward to seeing how it progresses. I think we're at the start of... I think this, we're at the start of, of this programme. So, you know, it is going to come back to executive board and scrutiny at regular intervals and, and we will, we will see how that journey is, you know, taken forward. And just an offer to you councillor Lam, as I did within the financial side, you're welcome to. You're, no, not at all, not at all, I'm not, but you're welcome to join my cross party working group on, on the digital access for, for councillors as well. If you, I'm trying to get members together to get on that at the moment. So I'd wel, I'd certainly welcome you on board that one.
Thank you, if there's no more comments on this paper, I'll turn to the recommendations. Can note councillor Lam's stated position on this and I take it everybody else is happy with the paper. That's great, thank you. And we're on to your paper councillor Fleek, please, item 12.
Thank you, thank you leader. I'm pleased to present this paper to the executive board today. I'd like to begin by thanking Polycup, the Forest Region and the wider green spaces service for their work in bringing this forward and allowing Leeds City Council to continue its involvement with the White Rose Forest Trust. Since the Leeds City Council engaged with the White Rose Forest, which was in 2012, we've actually managed to plant close to 500,000 trees across the district with the help of nearly 3 million in external funding leverage from the White Rose Forest. To allow this work to continue, executive board is asked today to endorse the White Rose Forest strategic plan for from 2025 to 2050. This includes a tailored plan specifically for Leeds taking into account existing tree coverage and the scope for future tree planting in line with other factors specific to the district. What it really means is from, from, this would actually increase tree and woodland cover from 18% to 33% by 2050. This will increase the area of trees and woodland by approximately 9,300 hectares, which is by far the biggest increase in the region. I'll stop there and happy to take any comments and questions.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
I don't have any particular questions on this one, happy to support.
That's great, thank you. With that, I take it everybody else is happy with the recommendations. That's great, thank you. That's great, thank you. We'll move on to councillor Lennox's paper, I'm sure this will be equally well received.
Thank you, yes, it's a really positive paper to bring. So we're looking at the papers around the phase one of the council housing growth programme and an update on the successes and proposal for phase two. So there's lots of figures detailed in the report, but I think it would be helpful for the thousands watching for us to just pick out some of the key ones. So the key one being for the, in the last five years in Leeds, when we take into account all that's been built and acquired and facilitated by this programme, we've delivered around 1,600 new units for social rent in the city, which we know is massively needed. We know, we know the challenges of the housing emergency and we know how many people are waiting on our waiting list for social housing in Leeds. So it's a fantastic success in that term, in those terms. And actually the wider partnership that we work with, that our council housing growth team and our Regent and Affordable Housing colleagues work with across the city in the last five years have delivered almost 3,000 affordable housing units and affordable homes, which is more than any other large city outside of London. So there's been massive success in the phase one of the, the growth programme. Just some other part, other successes to note are the wonderful extra care scheme at Gascoigne House, which people have had the opportunity to visit and will have, will have heard us talk about before. The acquisitions team have completed, I think it's over 430 now, acquisitions of either ex right to buy council properties which already exist in our estates and in our communities or new builds home from developers. The scheme secured 4.7 million of Brownfield Housing Fund from the West Yorkshire Combined Authority, which contributed to delivery of over 230 of those homes. All new builds that we've directly delivered have adopted the West Yorkshire MERS dementia friendly criteria in the build. We've secured 10.8 million pounds of funding to meet the needs of Ukrainian and Afghan families, which by March next year should have delivered 77 homes. 3.9 million from Homes England was secured to meet the needs of homeless people under the next steps and roughly putting single homeless accommodation programmes. And with the most recent flexibilities announced by the government, we were able to secure a further 16 new build off the shelf homes for occupation by September 2025, using the new flexibilities around the application of right to buy receipts. And again, we've been nominated for a number of awards for our scheme. So it's been really widely recognised what we're doing in Leeds, which is a really good background for our proposals for phase two. So there are five sites listed in the report which are using council sites to bring forward hopefully 800 homes expected in the new build, in, in the new phase of the scheme. The report requests an injection of 200 million pounds into the capital programme, which will be funded through a combination of HRA borrowing, right to buy receipts, receipts and Homes England funding. And it is at this stage too soon to build in any detail about the analysis from the government and the comprehensive spending review about this phase. But it's, it was so welcome to see that clear statement of intent from the government that they are putting social housing at the centre of their new housing strategy. And I'm really looking forward to seeing more about what that can mean for us in Leeds.
Thank you councillor Lennox. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I think for all of us as local councillors, some of the most challenging, upsetting and rewarding aspects are about supporting people with getting the right council housing, supporting them with repairs and making sure the conditions they're in are the right ones. It can be the most fulfilling parts of the job when you, when you're able to help someone and the most frustrating part of the role when, when you can't. And so overall, I broadly welcome this as, as a good direction of travel to help to improve the situation that we have. There will always be a lot more to do. There are some positives in here, some bits that I'm not so comfortable with. So absolutely recognise and acknowledge the progress that's been, that's been made around the various sites that were approved for addition, happy to support that. On the third recommendation around delegating approval, the positive of that is it will speed up the process, but it is crucial and I would like a real assurance that ward members will be heavily involved in that when it comes up. Because we have seen some schemes such as in PUDC, where that hasn't happened and we've not ended up where we should be. Similarly, there are schemes such as the Ardsley one, the extended scare, care scheme that became very costly and we need to make sure we learn lessons for the ones that haven't gone as well. So if you could give us some assurance around those aspects. The file, in the short term, the, the housing revenue account can support this and it's the right thing to do. The concern, as you've alluded to, is the long term and also to make sure that we're getting the balance right of delivering the new homes that we need, but also making sure that the existing housing stock is in a good condition. Repairs are being done on time, maintenance is being done on time, people are getting good responses and that we don't sort of choke one off to, to support the other in either direction. And the final bit is just about the risks in paragraph 52 and 53. And if you could just talk about the contingency, obviously we've seen inflation is stubbornly high today. That has an impact on what we can do going forwards. And if that has a knock on on interest rates, that has an impact on what we can do going forwards. So if you could make a comment on, on those things, I'd be grateful. Broadly support, but I'd just like that reassurance around member involvement if we're delegating approvals.
Thank you. Councillor Lennox, would you like to go first, please?
Thank you, I'm going to ask Angela to pick up some of the more detailed reply about the risks in a moment. But regarding member involvement, it's absolutely crucial that members are with us when, when we look at new, new schemes and new sites. Members know their, their areas best and as you alluded to, they know the housing need that's faced by their residents better, better than anybody. So it's something that always does happen. The PUDC scheme is now very much underway. We all went and looked at the very big hole in the ground just a few weeks ago and members have been included in, in the, in the discussions, in the development of that scheme. And it did take some time to get it right, but members were included all the way along the way. And I can give you the reassurance that that will be the case of any new scheme as well. So I'll just bring in Angela about the risks and also if Mandy has anything to say about, about where we're up, where we are with response times repairs and stuff like that at the moment, thank you.
Thank you, Angela, please.
Thank you leader. So just picking up on the ward member issues as well, they would always be consulted and they will always be accurately reflected in terms of all comments that we receive back. So thank you. The next point, I think you were referring to the scheme, which I think from memory is Little Orchards at East Ardsley. That was a scheme that predated the council housing growth scheme. And what I can assure you is a lot of lessons were learnt from that delivery mechanism and actually the design of that, that extra care site of the time. And all that learning was brought forward into Gascoigne House and equally, all the learning from Gascoigne House is now moving forward into, into the next, yeah, Middlecross, that was the name of it. And then just to comment on the risks, clearly we still have inflation and whilst that has stabilised, it is not reducing. So the ability of what we can afford to deliver is certainly reflected in terms of external costs. And the couple of things that we are doing to monitor that is, is one, is reviewing our procurement strategy right at the minute about making sure that we're getting the right tender processing. Two, the quality of the design and how we manage that. And three, what we've recognised certainly through phase one is that our budget can only go so far. So we really need to make sure that we are bringing in the funding that's available from things like Brownfield Housing Fund, which we did successfully in phase one, and also Homes England. And we've not been successful to date in terms of attracting Homes England, primarily because of the alchemy between all the previous rules around blending funding, which no longer exists. So I'm really hopeful that as we get more detail through the comprehensive spending review, we'll be able to attract more funding into the programme itself. And also making sure that we are making sufficient room for our registered providers who also benefit from the affordable housing programme that is administered from Homes England, which is why we've been able to kind of push the 1,500 target originally for this programme, despite the rising costs to 1,600, because we've been able to work with registered providers who are also then spreading the risk of delivery right through the sector.
Thank you, Mandy, would you like to come in, please?
Okay, so in terms of balancing investment in the council housing growth programme against the investment in our current stock, we do have a housing revenue account business plan, which includes projections of what investment need we have in our current stock for the next 10 years. I don't think we could ever say we would have enough resources, but it is a risk management approach. And certainly our current performance evidences that we are meeting need in terms of that investment need. So currently 96% of our housing stock meets the decent home standard and well over 90% of our repairs are being completed in time. So we are operating that routine investment within housing stock alongside the investment in the growth programme.
Thank you, if there's no more questions, councillor Lennox, please.
Yeah, thank you. Just to really briefly pick up on something that Angela said, the government has listened to us with a number of asks that we've been going to them with, a, a number of things that would help us in projecting further and, and understanding what more we can deliver. One of them being that blending of funding, more flexibility about right to buy receipts, long term rent settlements, these are all things that councils and local authorities have been asking for moving forward and the, the government have been listening. So it's really promising and it's allowed us and will allow us and for this programme to develop. Alongside, you know, we've, we've increased our budget, our capital programme this year for existing stock to 93 million pounds. So it's not something that we, while there is always, always a careful balance to be struck, as you, as you mentioned, the HRA can currently facilitate what is, what is planned here. And we will always make sure that, that we are keeping a, a good eye on how responsive we are being to repairs and maintenance. This is not about building shiny new buildings that we can, that we can bring exec board reports about and not making sure that we, we, you know, we keep on top of the condition of our existing properties because they are just as important to housing people who need good, decent, safe, secure homes in the, in the city.
Thank you, if there's no more comments on that paper, I'll turn to the recommendations on page 1901. I'll take it from the comments, everybody's happy with those recommendations. That's great, thank you. And we'll move on to councillor Venna's paper, please, item 14.
Thank you. I'm really, really delighted to present this report. So this is the drug and alcohol strategy for 2025 to 30. I hope, I hope the report has conveyed the, the really transformational impact on people's lives that the services in Leeds have. The report's already been, the strategy's already been approved by the drug and alcohol board and it's meant to the health and wellbeing board, so it's coming here for endorsement. It's a great piece of work, primarily led by Magdalena, so I'm really glad you're here for this item. Our services in Leeds for drug and alcohol support are really, really fantastic. Forward Leeds, which is where we invest most of the funding we receive, is rated outstanding, outstanding by CQC. It's the biggest drug and alcohol treatment service in the country and really unusually, it's in the third sector. So the millions of pounds that we receive for drug and alcohol support, we invest into the third sector, which is an unusual model and it's recognised nationally as an example of innovation and excellence and creativity. So we get quite a lot of national visits and attention for the service. I wanted to draw your attention to a couple of points in the report. Firstly, the focus on recovery. We have some really inspiring recovery focused services in Leeds, including Five Ways, which is part of Forward Leeds and is, is totally devoted to supporting people in recovery. Within that, we've got Recovery Runners, we've got Getting Clean, which is a CIC, which provides employment making soap for people in recovery, hence the very creative name. As we were developing the strategy, we visited the Equality Hubs in Leeds, which is very much reflected in the strategy. So the things that they told us, we did incorporate into what our plans are for the next five years. So for example, the cover report draws attention to when we went to the LGBTQ plus hub. We asked at the hubs, each community, what is specific and different in relation to substance use in your community? And what came up at that hub was that a lot of the community space in Loma Briga is in licensed venues, so bars, clubs, et cetera. And very much the need for some alcohol free, alcohol free space in the Freedom Quarter, which, so it's been great that we've had Pride Place, which is where we met actually for the, for the last year. The report also covers the work with licensing because there's a really clear correlation between areas of deprivation, off licences and high rates of substance misuse. So that's an area we can have a, a real impact in terms of our powers as a council. The report was really well received at the Health and Wellbeing Board. One of the partners said, people don't normally get excited about strategies, but actually people were genuinely really excited about this. I think because we tried really hard to bring it to life in terms of stories and also it's really apparent how much we've listened to, I think, the voices of partners as well as people directly impacted and in recovery. At the last meeting of the drug and alcohol board, we discussed in some detail the metrics that we will use to measure the efficacy of the strategy. Some of them are really quite easily quantifiable, like deaths, hospitalisations, number of treatment programmes completed. Others will need a bit more refining, like how we capture that we're protecting children from drug and alcohol misuse, both their own and other people's, for example. But that will be worked on so that we have a really good way of measuring impact. That will be done through the drug and alcohol board, which Victoria chairs, and the strategy will also be coming to the Health and Wellbeing Board on an annual basis. So I think I'll leave my comments there Chair, but I'm very happy to take questions.
Thank you councillor Venna. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I can confirm that by the time late on Sunday evening I got to page 1,925 of the agenda, I did need a drink. But yeah, I don't, there's, there's nothing in here that you can disagree with, the, the vision and everything is right. I think what I'd like to see over time is more of the how and more of the detail around the metrics and the measures and, and, because it, it is different. the metrics and the measures and, because it is difficult stuff, because it's about turning people's lives around when you're addressing this. And having, I'm sure we all have met people on all parts of this journey, people who are not ready to take whatever help is on offer, because that's something I've learnt in this, you can't help someone that doesn't want to be helped, whatever strategy you've got in place. And then meeting people who've come all the way through, it's making sure everything is there to help people who are ready to be helped as quickly as possible to turn their lives around and put the support in place to keep that right. And it really, it really isn't easy. My question is around how we are working with the prison service and the probation service around this, because they are crucial. And the number of people in the prison estate who, their primary, really the root cause of being there is around drugs generally and probably alcohol as well. And is this going to be delivered within that estate? Because it's still something, I struggle, really struggle to accept that there is a huge drug abuse problem within the prison estate. People go there because of drugs and in some cases, they don't go there because of drugs, but they come out with a drug problem. And that's not something that we should be able to tolerate and accept. So how will the strategy address that?
Chair, is it okay to go to Magdalena, who's done a lot of hard work of the report? And will be able to answer this better than I could.
Thank you, councillor Lam. So it's important to say that on the Leeds Drug and Alcohol Partnership Board, we have got representation from the police and probation. So Michelle Vosper and Catherine Blackbird are very active members of our partnership board. In terms of prisons, we've got a specific target we're measured on by the Office for Health Improvement and Disparities. And it's got a strange name and it's, so basically it's a continuity in care target and it measures people who go into prison and who come out of prison and who land successfully in treatment within 21 days. And what that target's trying to do is it's trying to remove the, get rid of the kind of revolving door between prison and community, where people might drop out of treatment and then re-offend and then get back into treatment. It's trying to make sure that people move seamlessly from prison healthcare to community treatment. And a no HMP Leeds, so Alexandra Davies from HMP Leeds, she's the drug strategy lead, she worked with us on the strategy, consulted on the strategy. And Susan Field from HMP Wielston, we're trying to get into, that sounds wrong, but we're trying to get into more prisons, if you like, to kind of get their voice in our work. But they have a departure lounge where they try and make sure that people are picked up by services. And that includes people who've achieved recovery in prison, because obviously that's something that's also possible and people do achieve recovery in prison. One of the barriers which we'd love people's help with, people may have heard Chris Sylvester from Getting Clean talk about how difficult it is for him now to get back into prison. So when he was a substance using offender, it was very easy to get into prison. And now he's somebody who's in recovery and is a champion, it's very hard for him to get back into prison and share those messages of hope and recovery. So anyone who's able to use their influence to encourage prison governors, that actually that peer to peer recovery messages of hope is really, really important. I don't know if that's answered your question, happy to try again, councillor Lam.
Councillor Lam, how do we get into prison?
Well, I have to drive past two in my ward on a regular basis, so yeah, I could tell you some interesting stories, but there isn't time now. Chris from Getting Clean, I've met a few times, he's fantastic, amazing, amazing guy. And all credit to him, he's a real exemplar of someone who has turned his life around and is a great role model. And I share your frustration at how difficult it is for him to go and talk to other people that will be able to relate to him far better than the many other people that would go and talk to them. So certainly we need to try and help with that. You did answer the question very well, so I'm grateful for that. I think I heard you say that the police and the probation service are on your board, but not the prison service. Is that an oversight on our part or is that because they are not willing to engage?
Thank you. Victoria, would you like to come in, please?
Yeah, thank you, Leader, thank you, councillor Lam. Just to add to what Magdalena's just said and pick up on that particular question on prisons, up until 2013, we in public health locally have responsibility for the health and healthcare of people in prison in the city. And with the changes in 2013, when public health teams came across from the NHS to local government, the responsibility for prison health and prison healthcare went to NHS England. So personally, I used to be incredibly involved in what happened inside the prison up to 2013. With that separation of legal responsibility, that's become much harder. Now, as Magdalena said, what we do is we still pragmatically work with prisons all the time and we absolutely did through Covid, we were in there and, you know, we're absolutely including them in our population. But we don't have the legal role to do that in the current arrangements. Now, obviously NHS England will cease to exist by April next year. We're particularly keen to advocate that we look very carefully what will happen to the responsibilities for prison health, because we've got three prisons in our city and absolutely want to be involved. So there is a, there's a sort of structural reason why it's so hard to get them around the table at the moment, because they don't have to be there in the way that they did previously. We do that by kind of influence and soft power. But we do, we do still work with the prisons, but it's been harder for us to engage them in a formal way, given that context. But we, you know, we're obviously part of the conversation about what happens to prison healthcare responsibilities as the changes come through with NHS England. So we'll continue to push to get them around the table on the board and kind of see what happens with the structural changes to support us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly something we'll support in the various partnerships we're involved in. Are there any more comments on this paper? I don't see any comments, so I'm going to turn to the recommendation on page 1,926 and I'll take it from the comments made so far, everybody is happy with that recommendation. That's great, thank you. And we'll move on to the last paper. Councillor Arif, please.
Thank you, Chair. This report seeks the board's approval for Leeds to host a tier one major event. The report also requests approval of a financial contribution towards delivery of the event alongside an internal cost contribution. In 2021, the exec board approved a framework for delivering major events in Leeds. This framework sets out a bold ambition for the city to host a tier one event annually. These events are not only high profile, but they also serve as a catalyst for economic growth, civic pride and international recognition. Hosting a tier one event represents a significant opportunity to bring this vision to life once again. The economic benefits of hosting such events are substantial. Previous tier one events have demonstrated the potential to generate significant economic impact, supporting the local businesses and attracting visitors from across the UK and beyond. The ripple effects of such an event will not only be felt in Leeds but across the region. Beyond the economic case, there are compelling social health benefits, the physical and mental health benefits of regular activity are well documented. One of the key priorities of our health and wellbeing strategy is to create a city where everybody can be more active, more often. Having a major event of this scale provides a unique platform to inspire participation, promote healthier lifestyles and engage communities in physical activity in a way that is inclusive and far reaching. Furthermore, the proposal supports our inclusive growth strategy. Hosting a major event enhances Leeds' reputation as a dynamic and attractive place to live, work and invest. It showcases our cultural vibrancy, our infrastructure and our capacity to deliver world class experiences, ensuring the benefits of the event are felt across the sectors in the city. In summary, the proposal represents a significant opportunity for Leeds. It's a chance to deliver transformative event that brings economic and social benefits to the city and its residents and I'm confident it will leave a lasting legacy. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just a couple of broad points on this. So I think absolutely we should be looking to host big events, we should be making Leeds a place that is hosting big events. Great that Leeds United are back in the Premier League and our goal should be to be a Champions League city, both in terms of football, but in terms of the things that we, that we offer around the city. The point I would like to make is that these things should wash their own face. They shouldn't be subsidised by the council taxpayer, we shouldn't be having to cut other services to fund them. So it's crucial, yes, that we are attracting these events, but that we have a clear model of how we then generate the income to cover, to cover the costs that we need to put in. The second point is just about acknowledging that while there is a wide benefit to the city of these big events, there is often localised disruption to people. I'd give two examples. We have the Leeds Festival at Bramham State every year. It's taken a lot of management, a lot of work between the council licensing, the organisers, local communities, but we've got to a point where despite the disruption, despite the noise, despite all of the traffic, broadly, the local community support it. Part of that is because there is benefit back. There is a community fund that goes with it, the communication is good between all parties, all stakeholders, and it's a good model of how we attract something to the city. It doesn't cost us anything to put it on, it's got a wide economic benefit and the local community's benefit. Contrast that with the Ironman that's coming up shortly, around, mostly around the Harewood Ward, but lots of villages have been told with very little consultation or engagement, sorry, on that day you won't be able to get in or out of your house and there's no benefit. And it's very difficult to persuade people that, well, you just have to suck it up because there's a wider benefit to the community or to the city for that day, so it's just tough luck. And again, I think part of the approach should be those communities that are going to be disadvantaged, see some direct benefit or at the very least, we're working really closely in partnership with them to manage and mitigate those things. So I support absolutely doing these events with those two principles at their heart.
Thank you, councillor Lam. Councillor Arif, please.
Thank you, councillor Lam, and I absolutely take your point. It's just worth noting that it is a contribution. We are however working to a cost neutral position, that's exactly what we're working at. In fact, some work's happened, you know, to make sure that's ongoing. In terms of your point about localised disruption, you know, we've got teams that do this in terms of delivering the events, I'm sure the team will be well versed in terms of any local issues. In relation to Ironman, happy to have a separate conversation outside of this in terms of the impact it's having and I'm sure officers will help with that as well, councillor Lam. Thank you.
Thank you. There is an exempt appendix to this item and if there's no more comments on the public part of this paper, I'll turn to the recommendations on page 1,971 and see if everybody is happy with those recommendations, please. I take it everybody is. So that is its last paper. That brings us to the end of the public part of the meeting, so we do need to go into the private section to cover the exempt items. So if everybody who needs to leave would like to leave now, please. Thank you, everybody.